That's right.
Okay, question. Kendall? If we could start with item five again, if you could just repeat that, so we make sure that we're clear with this, with the recording about the adoption of the budget, please.
Okay, so item five.
Is it recording now?
Good. Okay, so item five, 2026 budget, budget adoption, county general of seventeen million seven thirty-nine three sixty-three, special funds of fourteen million five forty-four oh fifty-seven, for a total of thirty-two million two eighty-three four twenty. You can see that, how it's broken down in front of you? This is what we worked through on the budget workshop.
The adopted tax rate is four, four, five, four, two.
One, two, yes.
Four thousand.
Two thousand, yes.
And that is down from last year, right?
Yes.
Alright, I appreciate it.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion approved.
Keith?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those.
Good evening, council. It's Thomas Fuller with Huntington County Mercy Management. I'm here to request a thousand dollars from our county general budget line, one thousand four four two hundred, which is our radio permit line, to go to one thousand one two zero zero zero, which is our overtime line item.
Is he having to run in some overtime?
Yes. And this is due to our increased calls of volume over, in the, beyond our business hours, and especially on our weekends, and also during our special events this year, especially during the four H fair. I was trying to flex my hours during those times, but we also had calls while I was off during those times, so I ended up having to come in, do those calls. So, I can't control when those emergencies happen on twenty-four or I sixty-nine.
So, you're going to be okay on your radio line item?
Yes, we have our radio needs this year, okay, so.
Well, we do want to pay you when you have to work, you know. Don't feel bad about it.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second by John. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those.
And the second request is an additional appropriation of five thousand dollars. This is from our NIPSCO grant. This will be going to our budget line nine one two five three one three hundred, to the education and training line item. This training is going to be for the, for, for all the first responders in Huntington County on living iron battery training. I sixty-nine has a lot more electric vehicles than all the Amazon vans in Huntington County are all electric now. So, we're just trying to prepare our first responders in Huntington County the best we can with that training.
Pretty dangerous stuff, eh?
It's very dangerous.
So, you've got a grant to cover that education.
Motion approved. Jamie, Jamie already made a motion. Second by Keith.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Thomas.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Thomas. Go get some rest.
We pin Shannon Stephanie?
So, I'm here for this first request for the commissioners to transfer forty-three thousand three hundred eighty dollars and eighty-five cents from work comp to retirement because we're running a little bit low in that retirement line item.
Was that just from overtime and other stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can go on with the other part because it's all county general, so they'll vote one time on both.
Perfect, I'll just keep on moving then. Then we have a request for, we're transferring seventy thousand, so ten thousand from Karen State, fifty-five thousand from building liability, and five thousand from service contracts, and that is going to ten thousand into council on aging, and sixty thousand for contract professionals.
So, why the, I'm struggling on the council on aging. Why did we, why are we transferring ten thousand to them?
I believe it's to cover mileage for, is it mileage? No?
I think what happened was last year they didn't disperse the ten thousand dollars that was due, and so when they dispersed it at the beginning of this year, it ate up all of the appropriation.
So, it reverted back to?
That was actually carried over at the end of the year, so.
Well, it's not really changed, just moved.
Yeah, it's just re-appropriating.
And they took it out of Karen and state, so it didn't affect anything this year either.
Okay.
That's fair.
I'm assuming these are legal fees, sixty grand?
Yes, sir.
And then, that, they'll have to vote.
They'll have to vote on these two. So, I'll retain a motion for these two. I'll make the motion to approve, item eight. Brian?
Second.
Second by Jamie. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those.
And then, item nine is a transfer of appropriation of seven thousand six hundred forty-five dollars from seed at fund, project six, to the seed at discretionary.
Actually, project six is discretionary and is going to HQ.
Project one HQ.
Oh, to cover the contract with HQ?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved. Second. Karen, second by Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Tim.
How you doing, Tim?
Great. So, I'm moving five hundred dollars from our requesting of five hundred dollars from our general fund, for education and training, to office supplies. This year, we went ahead and been waiting like five years to purchase the Space Force flag, pole, base, and top for Memorial Day event, plus for our office supply, or office display. So, we were just needing the five hundred dollars move from training to that. I'm not going to be able to execute five hundred dollars for the end of the year, so we're going to use it to get the flags updated. Plus, we needed a new Indiana flag. It had a hole, so.
Okay. John?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim. Hi, Bridget.
Hello. I am here to request an additional appropriation of one hundred fifty thousand into the local Roden Street Fund, and this is a fund that we use to pay the invoices that come in on projects for federal aid, and then we pay them upfront, and then we got, we get a reimbursement back from, and docked it out.
Motion approved. Second. Second by Brian. Any questions, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number twelve is a request of transfer from our restricted budget asphalts to service contracts, and restricted as well, and this is for the county share of the twenty-twenty-four Community Crossings matching grant.
Motion to approve. Brian?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are those going to dry up, or are we still getting these?
I'm afraid so. Twenty-twenty-six is probably the last actual community crossings, because they're going to go to a direct lane mileage reimbursement, and so then if you get the lane mileage reimbursement, you can only get a million dollars total. So, if you get a million dollars in lane mileage, you're not, you're not, you're not eligible for community crossings, or you're eligible for the difference, so.
That's the way I understood.
Yeah. It's changed a lot, so. Item twelve is, we're just requesting transfers for, this is basically housekeeping things. Some of our postage went up this year, telephone certification pay and floor mat services, and we're, we have some extra in the computer software to be able to fill in those gaps.
This get you through the end of the year?
Yes.
That's item thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah.
Motion. Motion by Jamie?
Second.
Second by Terry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And my last item is a transfer of appropriation in Cume Bridge from equipment to materials, and over the summer, we've had crews out inspecting all of our bridges, and some of the timber bridges need to have posts and things replaced, and so in order to pay for those, that's where we need to move some money into the materials rather than equipment.
It's not going to affect, your equipment is still okay?
Say that again.
Your equipment's okay?
Yes, yep.
Motion approved. Terry?
Second.
Second by Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian?
Evening, folks. Ryan Trubow, the administrator for the health department.
Hi, Brian.
We're just asking for a transfer of twelve hundred dollars from our health fund, which is the eleven fifty-nine fund, of the four five three zero two, which is computer hardware, over to eleven fifty-nine three one one zero zero, into contract professionals.
What, what is the contract?
Contract professionals, it's not a big secret.
I mean, I know it's a lot.
Not a big secret, we've had a lot of legal fees, uh, this year.
Still legal fees, then?
It's mostly legal fees on that part of it. I know the last one that we had, we actually went into the red on that, so we have, we have two ordinances that need to be redone, and those have to go by the attorney also, so that cost a couple hundred dollars for each one, so this, this should take us through till the end of the year.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He beat you by a whisker, Keith.
And then the next one is from our Health First Indiana, the eleven sixty-one three six two zero zero. We're asking for a four thousand dollar transfer from our service contracts. That was a service contract into the eleven sixty-one three one 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 zero, which is non-contract professionals, and what that is, is the win records that we use, which is our birth and death certificates, for the most part, is like about ninety-five percent of what's used in win records, and it's very old system. It's like, there's been two updates. It's very slow, and in order to update that, the way that it's done is it's set up for each individual local health department, so we have to pay for that. There's a lot of, a lot of fees that go into that, and then the other part of that, we'll be used next Monday. In fact, we have a gentleman coming that does PM on our fridges and freezers for our vaccines, that, where we hold that, so that'll, that'll be able to go ahead and, and cover for the rest of the year.
Keith, Keith, we're going to make sure that.
You want to get in there?
Second.
Second by Terry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those. Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Second here, Jeremy.
I am. So prosecutor next was unable to attend.
Okay.
So, they just have a very small transfer out of their office supplies line into the equip line for two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Those two bucks. Housekeeping.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Brian?
Second.
Second by Terry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, Seth, Seth Kissinger for community corrections. There's four transfers. The first one is a request of transfer from, from the amount of sixty-two hundred dollars in the twenty-twenty-four SIM grant fund eight six six zero. This grant just ended at the end of September. It says twenty-twenty-four, but it was an extent, they gave us an extension to go into twenty-twenty-five. And so, since it ended, this is just getting the court support and the social security out of the red.
What, the release specialist, that they just didn't have that position, or?
So, in that, I don't, if I remember correctly, we hadn't had that filled since January.
Okay.
And so, there's a substantial amount of money left in that line item.
Okay. entertain a motion. Motion approved. Terry?
Second.
Brian, Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item nineteen is a request of transfer in the twenty-twenty-five IDOC grant in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighteen cents, fund nine three one seven, out of the line item of field officer and the line item of office manager, into the line item of financial data analyst. The financial data analyst, in this amount, or a little less, was going to be paid out of the project income, and so we had a gap of not having those, the field officer and office manager fill this year, and so there's money left over by the end of twenty-twenty-five before this grant is done to fill that spot. So then, the financial data analyst doesn't have to be paid out of the project income.
Is this full-time job, or is this contract?
This is a full-time job.
So, Keith brought up an interesting, so you're, you're moving ten thousand seven hundred twenty-seven into the financial data analyst out of the IDOC.
And then the three hundred.
And then you're taking ten thousand four seventy-one out of the project income for the same position, it looks like.
So, two different funds. So, the financial data analyst, the ten thousand was going to be paid out of the fund one one two two, project income.
Mm-hmm.
And so, with the field officer and office manager having money left over by the time this grant ends, we were able to and got approval from the IDOC to get the transfer on the IDOC grant and not have to pay that amount in project income.
That preserves their project income, which is based off of the user fees, so now that you use the grant fees, they just had to get permission to realign it.
That is correct.
And that's why you'll see those changes in the salary ordinance as well coming up.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first one's for the ten thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighteen cents in the twenty-twenty-five IDOC grant. entertain a motion on that.
Motion approved.
Terry?
Second.
Second by Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, item twenty is a request of transfer in the amount of twenty-seven thousand three hundred seventy dollars and sixty-one cents in the twenty-twenty-five IDOC grant on the residential work release side of the grant. Transfer from the line item of coordinator, social security, retirement, and group insurance into the transition team manager. We had a change in position at the coordinator spot within the work release side, and so the benefits and the insurance had a gap of not being taken out, and so IDOC allowed us to take the two transition team managers out of what's being paid out of the catalyst right now, to be paid out of the IDOC grant for the rest of twenty-twenty-five, and so then I predict this transition team manager, all three, can be paid out of this fund and not touch project income once when the catalyst grant depletes on the salary part.
That make sense to everybody?
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
Motion by Jamie?
Second.
Second by Terry. All those in favor?
Aye. Certainly a lot of moving parts.
Anytime you do these moves, though, you still kind of have to get their approval, correct?
Yes.
These are approved by the IDOC.
Yes, I mean, they are, you always have to kind of get their approval, and then we have to do it as the local.
Yeah, so, for more so if it's.
I mean, because we see this, yeah.
For more so if it changes by series, like if we wanted to transfer from the three hundred series into the hundred series, they more want approval on their side.
Sure.
If it stays within the series, more than likely, they don't have to have a document for approval.
I think it just helps with transparency, and it helps so you can see how it's tracked, especially when we start changing the salary ordinance, because it can get really messy, but we work together to make sure that.
On that one, Leslie just wanted to make sure, since there was only one transition team manager being paid from IDOC, that it was okay for three team managers being paid from that, so.
Just keeping in mind, everything is being paid by either grants or the project income, mostly, right?
Correct.
So, that's why we're doing so much, you know, finagling here. I mean, it's, it's different grants that they're going after, and they're even looking for more grants to, to close the gaps in the funding, in, in the, in this year, for this year, the end of this year, but also next year.
That's my guess, my understanding, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And then in item twenty-one, is a request, request of transfer in the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred eight, nine hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-one cents in the project income fund one one two two. That amount comes from a transfer out of a line item of financial data analysts, group insurance, and traveling expense into the line items of part-time, living unit coordinator, social security, retirement, holiday, and reimbursement. This transfers for, the cat, the community catalyst part of the salary will be done for community corrections. My prediction is this pay period will have to start dipping into eleven twenty-two for those work release positions.
And remind everybody, project income is.
The user fees.
The user fees that the people that are in the programs pay.
Yes.
Motion approved. Motion by Terry.
I'll second.
Second by Brian. Any other discussion, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Heather Malone, chief probation officer, was also not able to attend this evening, and the encumbrance that you see listed is for the JBAI program. That's the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, and what this is, is expenditures made for the previous grant cycle that were paid after the grant ended. They're allowed to encumber those expenses to get them paid, so it's just a listing of those expenses, and we just asked for councils' permission to carry the appropriation forward so that it will be out of the red.
So, obviously, a bunch of items listed here totaling ten thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty cents.
Motion. Shane?
Second.
Second by Terry. All those in favor?
Aye.
entertain a motion to open the salary ordinance?
Do you, do you want to discuss any of that at all?
Yeah, we can discuss.
We don't have to vote on the discussion, but just to kind of recap, what Seth was presenting is they're, they're just trying to utilize all of the funding they already received, and due to vacancies, they're able to move some of those appropriations around and pay individuals from those grant funds, and because we don't know exactly when they'll be exhausted, we've kind of left the salary ordinance at a, we've just made statements that once the funding is exhausted, that they're currently being paid from, or that's projected, then project income will take over, so the list describes each positions and how they'll be paid. We just need that reference in the salary ordinance, so if we would look back, we would understand how the funding rolled out.
So, so it's my understanding, you're not changing any salaries, you're changing the description?
No, wages are being changed, it's just where they're being, where they're paying, being paid from, the funds that they're being paid from.
Yeah. Motion open the salary ordinance.
Second.
I'm going to give it up to Keith this time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, the vote is to just basically add this addendum to the salary ordinance for reference?
Yes, to approve as presented, referencing these positions and the funding that will take place from here until the end of the year.
About the only way you can do it.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Shane?
Second.
Second by Terry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm, I was late.
Most to close the salary.
Oh, close it, John. Close it.
Second.
I'll make a motion to close it.
Second by Brian.
Sorry, I was reading.
Peyton, who was on that?
Aye.
So, Jamie making the motion, Brian seconding, thank you.
Aye.
And I.
And all, everybody?
As I had it. In favor? Aye. Pass the seven zero.
Thank you.
Alright, any newer whole business? Community Corrections Committee, anything to add from?
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting yet.
We haven't had a meeting because of everything that was going on.
I'd be really interested to see kind of how they're forecasting out this project income, because obviously, we had a long discussion.
They were, the Latl Hallons events, we've had a meeting. Were you, were you there? Yeah. Where we voted to increase the fees substantially. Increase the fees, we're looking to help to bring in other.
Communities.
Communities into it, and we're going to hear probably an update on that at this meeting. Yeah, but at, at that time, though, we're still going to be short even increasing the fees. Yeah, so that's why we're going to bring in, try to bring in.
Try to bring in other counties.
Yeah, and they're still looking for, like I said, they're still looking for grants and stuff, too, because I, IDOC has left not just Huntington County, but a lot of communities short. I mean, that was a discussion at AIC, so.
Yeah, it's definitely, I mean, it's, it's in its infancy, we've got to. And then I don't, I don't know if this would ever stand on its own anyway without grant lines.
Not completely. I mean, I think you can close the gap, Kendall?
Yeah.
But I don't think completely. That, that doesn't appear that way to me, anyway.
Yeah. Alright, anything else solid waste?
Uh, we got our meeting pushed back to next Monday this month, so nothing.
Okay, three A, anything, John?
Uh, yeah, we had a gentleman from SAS out of Muncie. He gave a presentation on site surveys, phase one, phase two, phase three, looking for community elders, anything.
Yeah.
Do a phase one, phase two, visual samples, remediation plan, and base three, so. Kind of interesting, Matt Brinkman took another position. So kind of interesting, Matt Brimman took another position elsewhere and his assistant has moved, Sarah has moved into his position, so. The next meeting is in, uh, December.
Okay. Thank you. Anything on job plans?
No.
Nope. Anything on life change?
Uh, yeah, actually two months worth because of our meetings. Uh, the, the first month was, we actually spent, uh, an hour out at Boys and Girls Club. And anybody's never been there, it's worth going and seeing. What a beautiful place with so many things for the kids to do and there's so many of them that go after school and all. It's just an amazing place, I would just very, very.
They do a great job.
They really do a good job. And think, there's a lot of children that spend a lot of time there, be by themselves or whatever, so. Very, very glad, I mean, I, I've been there, but I've never went, we went, oop, we went through like every part of it and there's rooms for all sorts of different things and it's for different ages, it's just very impressive. So if you never had a chance to get out there, go take a look, see, they'd be glad to show you. And then the second month, we're, we're starting our, people are giving us presentations on the ones who want to get grants from us, so. Got a couple, three of those.
Do you know how much you're gonna have to work with this year, yeah?
I do, but I left my thing in the car. I think it's about the same as the year before. Yeah, yeah. Within a few hundred bucks.
Okay.
Early change, good at home.
Uh, anything on Muncie?
Uh, we had a retirement recognition for Mark, uh, at the, for that meeting.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, Matt, anything, Keith?
Uh, no meeting, but, uh, from the last few meetings, the, uh, the department's done a lot more activities. Going around the community of being well-recognized, so.
Yeah, good. Uh, anything on plan commission?
Yeah, we had, uh, meeting, we had one docket, uh, which is the acreage that was split up into a larger acreage and two, two, uh, building lots of four acres, four, just over four acreage piece. And that was approved unanimously.
Anything on seedet?
No.
Nothing. HQ, we meet tomorrow, uh, be interesting, be the first meeting without Mark, so it's gonna be an interesting, uh, not having a director there.
No, no director yet?
I thought he was staying till we found somebody.
Uh, he gave a hard stop on October first. So yes, he stayed as long.
He stayed totally good.
Uh, probably nothing on ABCD, right?
No. Shortened. Thinking about it.
Certain, okay, I was gonna say, we're getting close on that. Anything on tax abatements? Okay, Worm, anything?
I, I think last month we didn't discuss these, did we? These committees?
No, I don't think we did.
So my last meeting on Worm was on the twenty-sixth of August, it was in Markle. It was my first one, cause Terry had gone for me the prior time. It was some interesting conversation with the local municipalities and, um, Hartburg was there, gave a legislative update and that was enlightening as well. Um, but just talked, talked about the communities, different communities and their struggles they see coming with some of the state things that have come down the pipe. So I think they got some good ideas, I don't know at what point it gets off the ground. Um, but, uh, they got some neat ideas. Again, I, I don't know how much.
Yeah.
It'll impact those communities, but it's neat to see the communities come together, I guess, relax. Or anything else, so.
Jamie, has that kinda resurrected the one?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eric Long.
Eric Long, yes.
It was dead.
Resurrectors that.
Good, so, good. Anything on health insurance? Nothing? Good. Uh, anything to give us?
Uh, nothing till November thirteenth.
November?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thank you.
Combined dispatch, we met last month, nothing, nothing major and talked about the new radio and constantly upgrading equipment. Really, I think it's a big thing there, trying to stay up with technology. Uh, internal controls, anything, Jill?
Um, no, nothing regarding internal controls, we're pretty, pretty tight on things right now, so.
Went, did well with the audit, so.
That's always good.
Yeah, redevelopment.
There was, there's been no meetings.
Nobody, anything out in Markle?
Nothing in Markle.
Okay.
Uh, real quick.
Yeah.
Before you adjourn, I didn't do it on the business, but I did send out an email about the reimbursements we're getting from the state for the prisoner re- uh, room and board.
That's a good news.
And we are expecting to get another thirty-six thousand one eighty-five fifty-five on Wednesday.
Okay, good.
They are getting caught up on things, so that's a blessing.
Somebody heard the message.
I know.
Is that from twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's.
Twenty twenty-four is all caught up, we're actually getting reimbursed for a year this year. So we're, we're looking a lot better.
Crazy. Never seen anybody balance a check like this, cause everybody else. Anyway, uh, if there's, uh, I did send, Jill, you're looking up for me on the fire department budget stuff.
I, I haven't had a chance to.
If you haven't read the formula, Jesus.
I read it. Read it and understand.
I'm trying to put it into a spreadsheet, cause it's, it's a mess. Uh, just to kinda get a feel for kinda what it's gonna look like, so.
Under the new lit.
Under the new lit, so. So, yeah, so hopefully maybe by the next meeting, we can have something to at least chew on, on that, so. Nothing else, I'll retain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Keith?
Second.
Second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Yeah, if you don't, once your budget, okay, you brought it, you can leave it. Just leave it outside the door of my office, I'll get it when I get down there, I just can't carry it all.
Yeah, wow.
It was tough, really.
Well, the meetings came out, made notes, but.
I had about all I could.